Let's call the meeting to order at six thirty-one P M. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, we declare the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. I am here to give my感恩.
A roll call, please.
Present.
Here.
Chris Peterson.
Present.
Luther.
Here.
Superman.
Here.
Stu Minihan.
Here.
Here.
Present. We have one trustee on Zoom attending remotely. As far as the mayoral reports, again, there's just a couple announcements. I just want to remind people that, well, first, hopefully, everybody had a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Remember, Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day is coming up on December seventh. And then I'd also like to thank trustee Scott Pierce, Bill Mellon, and I believe April from the Blanket Penny's Purpose, and all the others that are involved this Friday or Saturday evening. The village, through the efforts of trustee Pierce and this committee, will be hosting how many sailors from Great Lakes?
We've requested three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty sailors from Great Lakes that are coming in for a holiday dinner, which is always well-attended and always well-received by them. So thanks for putting that together.
Hey, I really, I'm just gonna take a second here. I really appreciate the applause, but it's taken the effort of so many people to make this happen. There's more people on the committee that have been working much harder than I have to make it happen. So please some applause for them, too.
Thank you. All right, citizens wishing to address the board, just see if you may, if you pass that down to your clerk. Lori Romine will call you up to speak. She'll read the, I guess, rules of engagement for public comment. And please come up here and announce yourself and where you reside.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment made about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing stakeholders and values for thoughts and questions. The board strives to make best decisions for the village, and public input is very helpful. The board must protect this ability in the form of this meeting. Please be respectful of the duty of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your names and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful to or kind of sending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor of the meeting reserves the right to limit number of speakers making public comment over repetitive nature and will limit the amount of time for public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. First, we have Mr. Gary Bingle.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, people. My name is Jerry Bingle. I'm vice president of Oakwood Knoll's Property Association. We're speaking tonight to get on the public record in Philly. Our association has been made aware of an unusually safe safety situation in the channel and lagoon that drains into Cross Lake in the Oakwood Knoll subdivision. We wish to communicate this concern to the village and all waterfront homeowners on the channel and lagoon, as well as the Oakwood Knoll's residents. We have what is called quick mud. Quick mud at the bottom is at the bottom of the channel lagoon, which is a thousand feet long. And it includes the village's sixty-foot culvert. That's part of the channel on the Bridgewood Drive. Quick mud is similar to quicksand. Therefore, we are asking all the residents to refrain from using these areas for recreational purposes until we can clean up this safety issue, which is going to cost a hundred thousand dollars. During the drought last year, there was a little water, there was little water in the channel, and a person attempted to walk across it. It had leaves on it that looked pretty solid. Instead of using the bridge on Bridgewood Drive, he immediately sunk up to his knees in quick mud that had to be pulled out. His shoes are still buried in the chen. It is even more dangerous when there's water in the chen. Then kayakers, paddle boaters, and fishermen frequently use the channel for recreation. Anyone falling into the water off of those devices may instinctively try to stand on the bottom of the channel, causing them to sink in the quick mud and need to be rescued. Any attempt to pull one's leg out of the muck results in a vacuum effect, causing them to be stuck or go deeper and possibly drowned if their head goes underwater. They literally can't get out. You're stuck in cement. You can't move. I know, from personal experience. There have been several quick mud incidents reported by residents on the channel. And just by great good luck, we have not had an incident yet. The association owns the channel and lagoon. And therefore, we are concerned about public safety and the fact that we could be held legally liable for damages resulting from quick mud accidents. For example, a quick mud condition resulted in the death of two teenage boys in Illinois. The Supreme Court of Illinois found the property owner negligent and awarded $2 billion in damages. A decision like that would
You can, you can, you can, you can finish your, finish up your thought.
All right. It's not readily apparent to anyone that the ground under the water of the channel and lagoon poses a hazard. So the association was advised to immediately post warning signs and inform the community of the danger. To date, quick mud sites have been installed enough the channel midway of the channel in front of the village's stormwater culvert and in lagoon. Waterfront property owners were sent certified letters about quick mud and will be invited to a public meeting in January to discuss the situation and remediation strategies. A fire chief, chief of police, and village administrator were contracted to share this hazard information with first responders in the event of nine-one-one. The association using social media and newsletters to inform, educate all Oakwood Knoll's families about the danger of quick mud. We would appreciate any suggestions for the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Warren Nielsen.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. My name is Warren Nielsen. I live at five oh four Harp Street. I'm here with my partner, Diane, and in our, in our house is my son and his family. And I'm a resident of Antioch for sixteen years, in here in two thousand and six. I have some concerns concerning the journey that some of you will be taking at the recovery facility. And I was not able
Well, you addressed the board, yeah, just they said, addressed the board, so we just
Just the board?
Just, just talked about, yes.
Thank you. I spoke to Mr. Garrigan because I was recovering from COVID, and I couldn't attend the meeting, the public meeting concerning that facility. And I'm not sure all of my concerns that I discussed with Michael were addressed. So I'm taking this off and just kind of summarize. My concerns. Our property and the safety of my family and the security of the property. I asked about the frequency of meetings and the hours of operation. Will there be any overnights? Will there be police presence if necessary? And who will maintain the grounds? This is very important. This is the, on the corner off of one seventy straight, the Harton Church. Mr. Garrigan shared that the recovery club is presently meeting at a depot location, so there is a facility for them. They had received an endowment. They had, they want to buy and purchase property and land. I have prepared a memorandum for record with my conversation with Michael, and that's available. Do not, I don't want you to take this the wrong way. Both my parents were alcoholics. One of my sons was in drug rehabilitation three times. I understand the pain. I understand the frustration, the anxiety that goes into that situation. But the location that is being planned is a community. It's a residential quiet community. The recovery club would change the dynamics of this community. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm, I'm concerned about people that might change the character of the community. They're not residents of the community. And would they be concerned about the community?
May I, yeah, finish your thought.
Let me close with a scenario for you. You're looking for a home. You're looking for a place for your family. You're looking for a place that you can afford. You check the house meets the needs and requirements. You check for schools, the education values, and their goals. You find a place that you can get to work conveniently, one seventy-three to ninety-four, whatever that was, to Great Lakes. You walk the streets of the Antioch Village, and you're taken in by the flavor of a small town ambiance. Now turn around from that house that you have, um, supported your family. That's where they're secured. Turn around, and across the street is a sign that says Recovery Club. How do you feel? I appreciate your time for listening and listening to my concern.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll go along to the consent agenda. There's two idols, items on the consent agenda. Is there any request to remove any of those items? If not, or a roll call for the consent, motion in the seconds. Motion trustee Blueheart, second trustee Dominiac, roll call, please.
Here's.
Hi.
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Minihan.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next, the agenda is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of $1,999,473.35. Do I have a motion in a second?
Some vote.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second, second trustee Blueheart, discussion on the side.
Can we ask the administrator, give a basic breakdown of why it's so high, so it's in the record?
The bond payments are in the
Correct, correct.
That's correct.
Three bond payments.
These three, three bond payments included, which were semi-end.
I think, I think the total is a little over 1.4 billion for the bond payments on this.
One point two.
So, thank you. Any discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Here's.
Hi.
May I say?
Yes.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Minihan.
Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a planned unit development to operate the recovery center at four six six West Illinois Route one seventy-three. Antioch, Illinois, ordinance number twenty-two dash eleven dash fifty-nine. Do I have a motion and a second waving the second reading?
Some vote.
Motion trustee Dominiac waving the second reading. Second, trustee Blueheart. We also have administrator Garrigan here, and I believe the petitioner, Mr. Lamb, is also present.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before the bill's board this evening, an applicant for special use, the Antioch Recovery Club. Property's coming out is five, strike that, four six six West Illinois Route one seventy-three. The applicant, as you know, is currently located at a facility off Debo Street. They have requested special use to be allowed to proceed with occupying property, as I before said. As you recall, this property historically has been a church. It's been vacant for many years. The applicant is again proposing a special use. Properties we speak is currently R three. This type of use is not identified as permanent use. Therefore, they are requesting a special use for this operation. I have in my staff report a summary of the operation hours. So based on the substance, the applicant's proposing a seven-day, seven-days operation. I've identified the hours. They generally have up to two, two meetings a day. Perhaps allow Mr. Lamb to answer any questions as it relates to their hours proposal. There would be some night meetings. There also would be some weekend meetings. So I identified my staff report specifically when the applicant would be meeting. They've identified somewhere between twenty to twenty-five people, approximately maximum twenty-five people would be attending a meeting, again, the maximum. Generally, it would be twenty-five individuals based on their current operations. With regards to parking, obviously, this would be a new use with proposal. The applicant, based on using, because we do not have specifically a breakdown for recovery club, because our park I used generally a higher standard for the issues assembly based on the current capacity of eighty seats. There would be a requirement based on the original assembly of twenty parking spaces. There are currently twenty-five parking spaces. Based on the current demand, based on the number of twenty-five maximum, based on attendance at the recovery club, staff believes that there is sufficient parking to meet the requirements. There was some expressed concerns about lighting and four metrics. The applicant has submitted a four metric plan. Mr. Lamb can simply provide an outline if there's any concerns that relates to lighting. Plan Commission did support this by about a six to zero with the required four stipulations. The applicant has agreed, based on stipulation by the Plan Commission, that there will be absolutely no attendant, no resident or overnight stays by any members of the recovery club. So this property could not be used for any type of residential or overnight use. There was an expressed concern by the Plan Commission. And the applicant did agree to that. That's incorporate the staff report is the stipulation, which is the part and parcel of the special use ordinance. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Again, Mr. Lamb, and I believe counsel for the applicant is here this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb, would you like to?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Lamb. I'm the president of Antioch Recovery. As you know, we've been operating over here on Debo Street for twelve years. I had the police department run some reports to see how much trouble we've been, and we haven't been. We've had two police calls since two thousand and eighteen. One was for someone who was sleeping or was drunk and disorderly. Our facility helps people recover. People have this, our Chicagoland area has a drug problem. We all know that. And young people and older people come to us to recover. The facility that we're speaking about, I wish the gentleman could have stayed that was here before talking, so that I could address his questions. There's not going to be a big flashy sign that says Recovery Club. It's very subdued, what we're planning on putting there, and there's no overnights. We're not any louder than a church. People are respectful. Most of the people that, that come to our club are solid recovery people, so they know how to behave. I don't think what we're proposing is, is on the line at all. I don't think that would change property values or, or anything. Perhaps if more people had a place to go to get help, then more people would get help and wouldn't have the kind of trouble that goes along with drug addiction and alcohol addiction. Any questions I can answer for you?
All right, I'll open it to the trustees for questions and comments. Usually, we'll allow everybody to go around twice, so I'll start here with trustee Pierce.
Is there anybody else who's gonna speak?
Nobody else is.
All right, I have, as I look through this, I don't have as much information, I guess, as I, I would like to have had. I have, I have concerns about the parking. I have concerns about the lighting. It's, it's a high hill area, which means whatever lighting is there will be seen from several areas, whether it's the, the Lake Antioch area or people who are living across. So I have, I have concerns about the lighting. I have concerns about the amount of parking. If you have a meeting with twenty-five people and you got twenty-five parking spaces, everybody's gonna be parked, parked in every parking spot, and there may not be these bare parking areas. And then on that, I'm concerned about the handicap parking. I've also received several phone calls about the notification process from the village and how, how people were notified and were given the notification. Mr. Garrigan can address that part. I'd appreciate it. My, my tendency right now is, even though I am a firm believer in recovery and believing me, my family's been a special, special member of the recovery clubs all over the country. I'm very concerned about where this is located and the lighting, the parking, and the notification of residents. To the point where I, I believe this should be set back to the planning zoning for further review of parking and lighting and, and the re-notification of all the residents around there. Strictly stipulating what this will be and, and what's gonna be included there. But I don't believe that was properly done the first time. So I, I would ask the attorney, can I make a, a sub-motion? Since you've got your rules of orders here to table this and send it back to the planning zoning?
Yes, go over to Roberts. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Narip, thank you. Yes, both under Roberts' rules of order, you can make a motion to refer to committee, and I believe subsection G under the special use permits section of our zoning code allows this board with the discretion to refer back to committee. Just one point to note that if it does go back, or this, if the motion is made and seconded, the debate then just goes to, you don't debate the substance of it. You debate actually whether it should go back to that committee. Then it would go back to the committee with taking into account what is at here. And then they would redeliberate on those issues. So if you're making a motion, obviously, Mr. Trey can make the motion. But it would need to be seconded, and then the nature of the debate would actually change at that point.
I would therefore make a sub-motion to send this back to planning zoning for further review of the parking and the lighting and the, making sure that the, all the residents that's around there receive a clear and concise letter notifying that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, well, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, just wait till we do, then we could call Michael up and ask some questions. So there's a motion on the floor.
I'm in a second.
Second trustee.
I, may I add something to it? The, this gentleman who spoke before was not heard during public hearing. I have a copy of this letter, and it just says that if you're interested in attending via Zoom, please contact the village clerk. It doesn't say anything about it actually attending in person. So what are we doing?
So let's, so let's, so let's do the motion in a second, and then we'll discuss the, these matters regarding the notice. If there's questions for staff, we can bring them up during the questioning.
Okay.
And then, so there's a motion, trustee Pierce, the second trustee Peterson. Do I have a discussion on this? So trustee Peterson, wanted you, if you want to finish, or trustee Pierce had some questions regarding the notice.
Yeah, there's a motion in a second.
Yeah, there's a motion in a second.
I, I've been pretty clear in mine, so I think trustee Mason would be the next one to debate.
Trustee Mason, do you have any comments on this matter?
Yes, thank you for acknowledging me. Yes. I, I'm agreeing that there was not proper notification, and you gotta pick up the families. Not only to the residents that, that are living, but you gotta pick up the families on the side that may be affected, that maybe, you know, because they go there and pray, and you gotta, you, you, you know, those people should be notified as well. So you got a lot that, that go on that tree line there. So there was really no notification of, of what this is gonna be. And secondary, I get the signage. There's a lot other locations, and we always go in. What is our town gonna look like? And this is just saying we have a drug issue. And yeah, we do probably have a drug issue. But, and, and people need help. I understand it. But that's right on our main road, and we're put, we're throwing this right inside a residential area, and then you're sitting there saying, well, what's, you know, what's next in a residential area? A Wendy's, you know, where does it end? So the respect of the residents, you don't plop a hardware store in the middle of downtown. You know, on, on North Avenue. So the respect of notification, I don't think that was really given. You know, we got Facebook, and it wasn't used. We, it just just wasn't used. So I agree with trustee Pierce. I agree with trustee Peterson, wholeheartedly that this has to go back.
Trustee Pierce, I didn't mean to interrupt you during the last portion, so I'll let you finish.
If you wanted to make any more comments. Before she talks, again, I think we need to clarify the instructions from the attorney, because we're just debating whether this goes back to planning zoning.
Correct.
Not debate the substance or the quality of the issue.
Correct. We're talking basically about notice, and if you have concerns about lighting and parking, those are the issues that were.
Excuse me, Your Honor, before Judge Peterson speaks, apparently I'm on the loop, because I'm not aware of the fact that there was a notification issue, so maybe it would be a good idea to have staff explain to the rest of us that aren't familiar with just what notification was. At least at some point here, so whether it's before trustee Peterson speaks or
Sure, I'll let her finish with the letter, the substance of it, and then I guess, if there are any questions, we can ask staff.
I asked Mr. Garrigan to send me the letter that was sent to residents. This gentleman who spoke tonight didn't feel like he was heard during a public hearing, and that's why I think it should go back. Everyone during a public hearing should be heard, and he was not heard. So that's, that's why I would like to send it back, along with the concerns trustee Pierce has. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do we want, do I have to go around? You want to, I was, I'm leaving now. Yeah, I'm gonna go around, I'm leaving before staff. Well, I'll go around once, I'll ask staff to respond, and I'll go around again. How about that? Okay, trustee Blueheart.
Michael, can you explain, because I'm along with trustee Dominiac, wasn't aware of any issues with notification? What the proper procedure is, was it followed, and what exactly was done for notification? So in accordance with state statute, in accordance with our ordinance, an applicant who is requiring special use has an applicant, has a requirement to give no advice, notification with a minimum of fifteen days, maximum of thirty days prior to the public hearing, which is the public Plan Commission. They're required to send that notice between fifteen to thirty days with all property within two hundred and fifty feet. That's based on state statute. That's based on our zoning ordinance.
Was that done?
But yes, that was done. We had worked with, we actually specifically the list of properties, which was checked three times by our G S department. Our G I S department provided the applicant with the actual properties within the two hundred and fifty-foot radius. So I have certified letters here of all the property owners along with our list that was prepared by G I S, our G I S department. A lot of properties within two hundred and fifty feet get based on state statute, based on those ordinance. There's no requirement to give notices of properties beyond two hundred and fifty feet based on the law. That's what the law affords. So the applicant, based on my interpretation, adhere to state statute in our village ordinance. I did have a discussion specifically with one applicant, with Mr. Warren, I'm sorry, how's his last name?
Nielsen.
Nielsen. We had, I had an application opportunity to actually try and follow up on some of his expressed concerns. I think we did discuss the public hearing that was scheduled for that meeting. I don't recall if he attended. I guess he did not attend that meeting. I know there was a discussion, obviously. I did explain to him. As I explained, everybody who calls me on any case, if they have any questions, I also outlined that they have not, we come to the public hearing, express their concerns. That was articulated to Mr., the applicant, I'm sorry, the concerned resident. And at that point, we had no further discussions. I think I did follow up, email, try to answer some of his expressed concerns. While he did not attend the meeting, I can't articulate that. I don't know why.
Was there any notification on social media or just on the village's website? Was there any, uh, notification on social media or just on the village website of the meeting?
No, we don't, as, as a standard, we do not, we do not give notifications. No, it's not.
All normal procedures for notification work.
Yes, and we also posted a sign on the property. She's still maybe there, but, um, yes, we're supposed to sign on property too, of the public hearing.
Okay, no more questions at this point. Thank you. Trustee.
Can I, am I allowed to, I'm starting to get confused on what we can get. Um, am I allowed to ask a question to, uh, the owner? If it's not.
Yeah, I think right now if it's germane to like the notice and the procedure. But okay, so if we get past this, then we can ask those questions. All right. Trustee Deminier.
Michael, could you read the letter that was sent out?
For the record, this is. For the record, delayed again dated October sixth, twenty twenty-two, certified letters to the, of course, at homeowners. The applicant William Land has submitted a special use application for the property commonly known as four, six, six, West Elevator Route One Seventy-three Illinois in order that we be permitted to operate the Antioch Recovery Club for the purposes of holding a twelve-step meetings. Second paragraph, a public hearing for the proposed variants will be held, held on November second, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. Before the Planning and Zone Commission at the Antioch Village Hall. Uh, addresses eight seventy-four Main Street, Antioch Illinois six zero zero two in the village boardroom. If you're interested in attending via Zoom, please contact your village clerk. Third paragraph, should you have any questions, please feel to contact Community Development Department Office at eight four seven three nine five, uh, one thousand, extension three one one. Very true to your as an applicant. So that was sent by certified mail.
So it clearly states what the requested use was going to be. And is that a typical type of letter that would have been sent out? The information that is in there mimics what is traditionally or usually sent out.
This is the standard notice letter that we provided to applicants. Staff generally provides this standard language to our applicants. There's also some ambiguity, what constitutes a notice letter. So generally, this is, this follows the exact template that we forwarded to the applicant. The only reason, uh, the Zoom language was added is because obviously we've been going through COVID. Uh, and we do afford an opportunity to attend public, uh, public meetings as a courtesy via Zoom.
So, and again, this is different for me, so if I'm asking the wrong question, I'll withdraw it. But so basically, the notification from the statute and our ordinances. The letter defined everything that is usually and always put in with addition of Zoom, which I believe probably was included during COVID for other petitions, correct?
Correct.
And it was voted unanimously by planning and zoning.
Yes, it was.
And this board, uh, planning zoning is advisory to this board. So if we have concerns about anything about parking, lighting, whatever, that could be addressed by us without going back to planning.
That's your prerogative. Correct, you have that prerogative, to have that discussion. Um, it's your prerogative to have that discussion. If you're going to have any questions, yeah, as a late, so anything relating to this proposed special use.
And there's no requirement to notify anyone other than the people in the surrounding community, regardless of the fact that there may be people that are on an adjoining property where no one lives except through eternity.
There's nothing in our ordinance that requires, um, the applicant to, um, publicize beyond two hundred and fifty feet. Obviously, your, it's your prerogative to modify the ordinance if you want to require notice for, uh, five hundred feet, a mile, that's your prerogative. You can do that, but the minimum is outlined by state statute.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, one more time, trustee Pierce.
I still stand by my, uh, lighting issue, like parking issue. And I still, I think we may be needing to review our notification process to ensure that things are clearly and properly notified to people. Um, so I would stand by my initial motion to send this back.
Um, trustee Mason.
I, I agree with trustee Pierce on this one and trustee, uh, Peterson.
Right, trustee Peterson.
I don't think that the letter was specific enough as to what is going on, what is this use, this special use is for. An Antioch Recovery Club, there are a lot of people that don't know what that is. There are people that don't know what a twelve-step program is. I mean, God love them, they just don't know what it is. They don't, this didn't, um, I, I was at the planning and zoning meeting that night. They spoke of different, um, addictions that they help with. That's not listed here. Uh, so I'm just letting you know that I do not believe that this letter was specific enough to the residents that live there. So I think it should go back to planning and zoning and give those people a chance to really understand what is going to be right across the street.
Um, trustee Luther.
Um, it appears to me that all proper procedure was followed in regards to notification. Now, I could, I haven't seen the letter. I've just heard it for the first time tonight, but I haven't been contacted by anybody regarding it. So I mean, could it, would it be worded better? Maybe. A proper notification was given, a meeting was held. Our advisory board voted unanimously to move this forward. In reference to the lighting plan, Scott, it mentions that right in here that they're going to work with us on that. So I guess the parking issue can be discussed by the board. I see no reason to send this back for planning and zoning at this time. And I think it's something that we could, as a board, can work on and and fine tune if need be. Um, so I'm, I'm against tabling it at this moment.
Trustee Bourbon.
Um, I, I think that the wording, uh, obviously is extremely important. Uh, it's, it's very important because people need to understand exactly what's going on. Um, if it's vague, it can be interpreted in different ways. Um, like trustee Peterson stated, some people may not know, um, certain turn of terminologies that's being used. Um, and then just for the fact that, uh, the letter didn't state anything specifically about the type of addictions. I think that that's, that's a very important piece of information that was missing. Um, so I do think that we need to take it and send it back to the committee.
Trustee Deminier.
I'm really speechless. I'm looking at the faces of the people that are obviously here in support of this and, and it just kind of breaks my heart the way this is being discussed. Um, I'm not in favor of sending it back.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, so we will, uh, call, a roll call, I think this goes back to planning and zoning. So I asked, um, the clerk to, uh, call that vote, please.
Here's.
Hi.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Luther.
No.
Yes.
No.
All right, four voting yes, two voting no, motion carries. All right, um, Michael, when is the next, uh, meeting?
Um, next planning commission will be, probably won't be until January. We'll, I'll have to give pop, obviously proper due notice. Um, for notification purposes, going to get, uh, no, um, it, some illumination and how many addictions should we identify? You know, after work with the applicant and addictions would.
And I'm, it's a serious question. How many, I mean, I mean, are we going to get to a point like if we're put in a medical building, we're asked about the diseases they're going to treat in that medical building? It's a matter of, yeah, I, um, I, sorry, yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah. Let's, we just had, we said that, yeah, let's, let's strike those for the record in the discussion afterwards, but, um. All right, so, uh, we'll have, uh, the village attorney, uh, work with with staff to make sure that the notice is, uh, was being requested.
Understood.
Excuse me, could you maybe then also give everybody up here an opportunity, make sure that we got the right information on there? So we're not going to make these people go through this again.
I'm, I'm sorry, by Roberts' rules, once a vote is done, it doesn't get further discussed.
I will make sure that there's a notice. I will make sure the board sees it before it goes out, if that's okay with the chair.
Sure.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is the, uh, consideration and a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute a contract with Hitchcock Design Group to develop a parks master plan for the village of Antioch giving off of forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-four, I entertain a motion in a second. This is, so, motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Minister Kind, do you need to present to the court? All right, Ms. Quilt.
Thank you. This is a, um, overdue project that the Parks Department has, the Parks Board is wanting to make. It will be a positive, um, outcome for the village of all the parks being redesigned or refaced. So we look forward to years to come.
Uh, any discussion regarding the side of trustees? Trustee Pierce, trustee Mason.
Ron.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes, I'd just like to comment. I was at the meetings, um, and we sat down and talked to, um, these groups. And this, this group was by far and away the best, um, group that really had Antioch in mind and, uh, has worked with other small communities. So this, this group is really going to do it. Plus, they're doing it for less money than the other ones. So, um, I'm all in favor of this.
Yeah, another, that they're very into, um, they will write grants for us to get some of it, yes, done with grant writing.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, trustee Luther. Um, nothing at this time. Trustee Bourbon.
Uh, nothing.
Trustee Deminier.
Nothing.
All right, um, thank you. Uh, I entertain a roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution to approve the determination of the amounts of money estimated to be necessary to be raised by taxation for the year twenty twenty-two, collected in twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-four on the taxable property in the village of Antioch pursuant to section eighteen dash sixty of the Truth in Taxation Law Resolution Number twenty-two dash eighty-five, I have a motion in a second. Motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Pierce. Um, I know we had a little presentation on this again last year. I think, uh, Joy had done a presentation about this. So Zeta, why don't you just refresh people's memory before they think that taxes are.
Thank you, Mayor, and Board, and you could do that video again before we do the levy. But tonight, all we're doing is presenting a resolution, giving you an estimate on what the tax levy is. My numbers arise based on where county gives us estimated E A V for the village of Antioch. We get the C P I. I review the, um, maximum, the caps for each fund. We're an unhome root community, so we do have limitations. So at this time, we're estimating four million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars for the levy, which there'll be a public hearing because as, um, my predecessor explained last year, base, the base homes that have already been fully assessed are limited to the amount of increase on the rate. But we want to capture new construction, additions, anything that's new. So county gives us an estimate of what the new property, new construction is. And I put it in there and I piece it together and give you a number. So therefore, that will require a public hearing and our clerk is already preparing the information to close it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions or discussion? All right, if not, a roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Um, next item is item number seven. Uh, consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-six, so I have a motion in a second. So, motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee, uh, Berman, uh, the auditing firm, Lauderback and Amon is attending on Zoom. I believe, uh, my notes here say Courtney Moore, Hannah Clarton and Keith Schump are on Zoom as well as Zeta to, uh, present this item.
So item number seven is going to be presented by Courtney and item number eight by Hannah.
All right, um, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. As mentioned, my name is Courtney. I work with Lauderback and Amon. Um, I am the audit manager for the village of Antioch and I'm here to present the April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two audited financial statements. Um, I first would like to say a huge thank you to Zeta and her team for all their help with the audit. Um, it really takes a lot of extra time outside of the scope of their regular job duties to prepare for us. Um, so thank you all so much. Um, it truly is a group effort. Before I get started, I did want to mention that the village of Antioch has once again received the certificate of achievement award through the Government Finance Officers Association for last year's audit report. Uh, the village has received this award every year since two thousand and six. Um, so congratulations on receiving it once again. Uh, this is a very prestigious award. It's only given to a handful of villages and park districts throughout the state. Um, and we will work with the village to submit this application for twenty twenty-two as well.
Thank you.
So I am going to share the audit report real quick, um, and just kind of give a very brief overview of the financials. Um, the purpose of an audit is for us to perform various tests and procedures on your financial statements, um, to ultimately form an opinion. We did give the village an unmodified opinion. It's also known as a clean opinion. It is the highest opinion that we can give. It states that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So, uh, just a couple of key financial highlights, um, for those of you that may have a copy of the audit report in front of you, this does start on page twenty-eight. Um, but I have also pulled it up on my screen. Um, overall, the village's total net position increased by about six point five million dollars. Um, the village's beginning net position was about eighty-three million dollars, uh, resulting in an ending net position of ninety million dollars. Uh, governmental and business-type revenues totaled about twenty-four million dollars this year, which exceeded total expenses by just about six point five million dollars. We get to the, uh, balance sheet for the individual major governmental funds, which start on page thirty-two. Um, and overall, the village's general fund did end the year with a fund balance of about seven point five million dollars. Um, as you'll see, this is kind of separated into a few different buckets. There's about seventy-three thousand of that fund balance that is non-spendable. Uh, twelve thousand is restricted, five hundred and six thousand is committed and the rest is unrestricted to meet the ongoing needs of the village. Past the financial statements, we have the notes to the financial statements, which are really the meat and bones of the entire audit report. Um, it really explains everything you may need to know, including capital assets, debt, uh, I R F and other pension plans that the village may have. Uh, I did want to point out that on physical page sixty-nine, you'll see, uh, the fund balance classifications, as I mentioned earlier, with the different funds and how it's broken out into those different buckets and what exactly they are for. Past this, we do have your budget to actual, um, physical page ninety-six shows your budget to actual for the general fund. Um, overall, you did budget for about an eighty thousand dollar increase in fund balance. And obviously, as mentioned earlier, uh, you had about a seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar increase in fund balance. Um, so you can kind of see where your revenues and expenses landed based on, uh, what you were anticipating. The other bound document that is part of our deliverables as part of the audit is the management letter. Um, this really lays out our suggestions to management, any policies, procedures, or anything else that may have come up during the course of the audit. I did want to mention that you'll see in there, there are four different comments. Um, they were all prior year recommendations. Of those four, two of them were implemented this year. Um, so you'll see the status update was changed to implemented, um, so they will not be repeated in the, um, upcoming fiscal year. Um, and I did also want to mention that one of the comments is related to a new Gatsby standard, um, which essentially governs the way your financial statements are presented. Um, and we will work with the village to get this implemented as necessary, which will be, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So it's kind of more an F Y I comment, um, nothing really negative or anything that you really need to look into at this time. So with all of that being said, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right, thank you for that, um, summary and I will see if anybody, the trustee Pierce, you have any questions on this? Trustee Mason.
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions.
Trustee Bluthard?
No question.
Trustee Berman?
No.
Trustee Domeniac?
No.
All right. Thank you very much for your, uh, comprehensive report and, uh, thank you for the finance department for working through this project. Thank you. On that resolution.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is number eight, consideration and approval of a resolution accepting. Gatsby sixty-seven and sixty-eight actuarial valuation for fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And the tax levy actuar- actuarial valuation for fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three for the police pension fund. Resolution number twenty-two dash eighty-seven. I'll entertain a motion in a second. Motion trustee Bluthard?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Um, I apologize, but I think she said, uh, is it Mr. Schum is gonna present this?
No.
All right, Kevin, you're kidding. All right, Kevin. Sorry, I can't see your name on the screen from this.
No problem. All right. So just by way of introduction, my name's Kevin Kavanaugh, Lauderback and Amon, and I'm your actuarial consultant. Uh, I'm going to go through a quick summary. Of this year's actuarial results. Um, on an annual basis, we do three actuarial reports for the village of Antioch. One of them is for the post-retirement medical plan. Um, the other two are for the police pension fund. Uh, for the police pension fund, one of those reports is about, uh, how much to fund into that. Uh, plan each year, uh, from the village. Um, and the other report we do is for financial statement reporting. So the majority of what I'll discuss. Uh, here is for that funding report for the police pension fund. I'll go ahead and share my screen really quick. All right. Um, so looking through, uh, the results from this year, really the key results, um, is that the recommended contribution for, from the village, uh, to the police pension fund. For this upcoming tax cycle, um, is this amount two million one hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, as you should see on your screen in front of you there. Um, year over year, that's actually a decrease of about twenty-seven thousand dollars. Or about a one point two six percent decrease in that requested amount. Um, we'll get into those factors that led to a decrease in just a second. Few of the other key metrics are shown on this page, which is the total fair value of assets within the pension fund. Um, you also see the actuarial value of assets. Uh, with, when we talk about the actuarial value of assets, uh, it smoothes in the impact of investment experience over time. Um, and so this year's accrued liability of thirty-seven point zero one million minus the A V A, uh, gives us our total unfunded liability. Um, so that's the amount remaining to fund into the pension fund to achieve that one hundred percent funded level, um, is twenty-one point eight nine million dollars. Uh, so that twenty-one point eight nine million dollars is being financed, uh, this year over an eighteen-year period. Um, so that's a big chunk of this year's recommended contribution as a payment towards that unfunded liability. I'll show you that in a minute. See a funded percentage, uh, year over year is increased on an A V A basis by about four percent. On a fair value basis, uh, the fund is about flat, uh, funded percentage at about thirty-nine percent year over year. On slide three in the presentation, you'll see, uh, the year-over-year changes that affected the development of this year's recommended contribution. Um, so coming into this year, we expected to see an increase. Um, we did see salary increases come in greater than expected, uh, which led to a twenty thousand dollar additional increase. Actuarial experience covers all the demographic experience of the fund during the year, um, also includes any updates that we make to the valuation. Um, so that was a hundred thirteen thousand dollar decrease this year. Asset returns, uh, being less than expected, uh, probably not a surprise to many, um, led to a ninety-five hundred dollar increase this year. And contributions were greater than expected on the village side. Uh, this is mainly just due to timing, um, and the determination of the recommended contribution. Uh, which led to a further decrease. All said and done, looking at the year-over-year reduction, uh, in the requested amount of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. On slide four, we just showed the two components that make up the recommended contribution, uh, notably the normal cost, which is four hundred and sixty-three thousand. That's like the ongoing cost of benefit accrual for the active police officers, um, so their cost of this year's benefit accrual. Um, and then the other piece is that payment towards that unfunded liability, um, that twenty-one point nine million dollars being financed over eighteen years. Um, so this year's payment towards it is that one point seven million. Demographic changes are summarized on slide five, uh, without dwelling too much on that, uh, the experience of the fund this year. We saw five new hires, three terminations, um, and no mortality experience. Slide six is just going to show you the active membership within the pension fund, um, how much agent service each member has. Uh, so it just kind of shows you where, where the membership lies. Slide seven shows you the breakdown of active and inactive members and your fund is a fifty-fifty split, uh, with twenty-eight active members and twenty inactive members. Uh, benefit payments last year paid out from, uh, the pension fund was about one point five million. In ten point, ten years from now, we'd expect the fund to be paying out, uh, just under two point seven million dollars on an annual basis. You can see the return for the fiscal year on slide eight. Um, this is showing you the total change in fair value. Uh, most notably, the experience, uh, it was, it was a tough year for investments for all the pension funds we work with. Um, your fund returned negative six point one percent, uh, for the fiscal year ended April thirty, twenty twenty-two. Uh, comparing that against the expected rate of return of six, seven, five, um, that tells us that the return was, you know, a little less than thirteen percent off of what we would have expected it to be. Uh, for this year, expecting the growth, but seeing the contraction of the fund this year. Um, that impact is phased in over a five-year period. Um, so keep in mind, we have not yet reflected the full impact of this year's investment loss this year. It'll get phased in over a five-year period. Risk management comments are on slide nine. Um, so first off, we would, um, like to see, you know, in an ideal world with the pension fund. Uh, they would have the asset set aside to take today to cover inactive liability. Uh, we recognize today that there is a shortfall there. The fund has fourteen point four million dollars in assets. Uh, twenty-seven point three million dollars of liability attributable to, uh, inactive members. So that's members who are. Past their active working career, retirees, disabled members such as such like that. Um, and so that there is a shortfall there. Um, the fund is paying out a pretty high portion of the total pension fund in benefit payments on an annual basis. Um, the fund pays out as a percentage of the total fund, ten point eight one percent, um, in annual benefit payments. Um, so if we stack that up against the expected rate of return, uh, the fund is expected, uh. To earn six point seven five percent on an annual basis, um, but pay out ten point eight one percent. And so, um, ultimately that's. Kind of on the flip, the wrong side of that equation means investment earnings alone are not going to be enough to keep up with, uh, benefit payments. Um, on this last bullet point here, this is just about potentially changing the expected rate of return. I would say that being at six point seven five percent, uh, your fund disposition, uh, probably pretty well. Uh, right now, the consolidated police pension board, uh, is going to start producing statutory minimum actuarial valuation reports for. Uh, your pension fund every year, um, as part of the new consolidation legislation, uh, consolidating the downstate police pension funds. So when they do that valuation, they're going to be using a six point eight percent expected rate of return, uh, which is roughly in line. Uh, with your current assumption here of six point seven five percent. Uh, on page ten here, we show you the alternative contribution, um, which comes in this year. This is. Following the statutory minimum funding policy, which is to be ninety percent funded by the year two thousand forty. Um, we would determine a contribution, uh, in the amount of one million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand eight thirty-one. Again, we still recommend the contribution of two million two hundred and seventy. Um, this is just kind of showing you what the minimum calculation would look like. Um, the difference between the two mainly being the, uh, target funded percentage, being that our recommendation targets a hundred percent funding, uh, over the next eighteen years. Uh, versus the statutory minimum targets ninety percent funding over that same eighteen-year period. Then just wrapping up with these last two slides was come from the Gatsby sixty-seven, sixty-eight report. Um, on page eleven, this is going to show you a five-year history of how much the village has put into the pension fund. Versus what was recommended to be contributed during that same year. Um, you can see this year, the village had a pretty good year, uh, contributed in ninety-nine point three two percent of the full recommended contribution. Um, over the last five years, on average, uh, just under ninety-six percent at an about ninety-five point six one percent. When we do a projection, uh, into the future, we use that ninety-five point six one percent to project future employer contributions. Because that is a little bit less than the full recommended amount. Um, under this Gatsby projection, uh, there is a projected insolvency in the future. Um, one of the things I think that, uh, will be kind of good news for next year is if the village makes a good, has a good contribution year. Um, that's like in the high ninety percent or a hundred percent of the recommended contribution. Uh, during fiscal year on April thirty, twenty twenty-three, then I think we're going to see this result change. Um, but based on the current results, uh, the plan is projected to become insolvent in the year two thousand seventy-seven. Um, so what that does ultimately, it, it increases the net pension liability that's reported on the village's financial statements, um, and appears in the audit. Um, so the good news is, uh, it looks like in the last four years, the village has been on track, uh, kind of improving that percentage. Of the contribution as it relates to the recommendation. So with that, that's, uh, the results of this year's actuarial valuation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. This is, um, Scott Carter. So to make sure I understand, um, the recommendation that's going before the board. Uh, that I support is we, you're recommending we fund it at two, two million two hundred and seventy thousand, is that the number I heard? Uh, which is the amount, uh, not the reduced amount that is in the report. Is I correct? Am I misunderstanding that?
So the, the recommended contribution is the amount shown on page two in the presentation for the current valuation. Uh, the amount is two million one hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Okay, guys, the arm is inside the cover. Okay.
Yeah.
And Zeta, what do we contribute last year?
Um, Kevin, answer that. It's right next to the numbers, next to, um, on page two, right next to the number. We contributed last year, we did two million one hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. For the tax levy coming up, the official tax levy, we will not be reducing the contribution. We will keep prior years, even though the actuary, um, is recommending the reduced amount. With the staff is going to recommend to the board that we keep what we made last year.
Two billion one?
Yeah.
What ate it? Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Kevin.
Thank you. Discussion, please. Trustee Pierce?
This really kind of concerns me. Um. It sounds like there's a rec- there's a recommendation to reduce the amount. And from, from. From the accountants and then Zeta is saying we're going to keep it at the two million one hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Then there's an alternate, uh, contribution in here that, um.
The ninety percent?
The, the, to, the ninety percent will. There's an alternate contribution, one point eight million. To take us to forty percent. I, I'm very concerned about how much we're contributing and if the recommendation to reduce it is correct. Because as we know, the stock market is going down. I know I've lost a year's retirement, um, funds in the last year. Um, I'm very happy about it. And I'm sure our police department would be very happy about whatever they're doing either. Um, so, uh, we're adding, so we have a stock market going down. Uh, we have more officers coming on. And I don't see how they're coming to a, a, a recommendation not to increase it even, even more to balance those out. I, I, I don't know if we're taking care of rosters as best we can.
Uh, what's that incident?
I understand the concern. I think it's valid. Um, but it all is accounted for in the actuarial assumptions. This is why we hire the actuaries to tell us what to do. I do agree with not reducing it. At least keeping it level. Um, contributing above what's required of us and we can even do better than that this year by keeping it flat. And I don't know how, how to answer it any other way. This is why we have Kevin come in and explain to us how he came up with the actuarial calculation. He's taking all these, those factors into account.
I, but I heard him say in his statements that the full impact of the decrease in the market has not been accounted for. We'll be accounted for over the next five years. Then we need to perfect it, not wait five years to, to, uh, to account for it.
I, I think we're in it for the long haul. We're not looking at. One or three or five-year time horizon here. You know, you mentioned your investment accounts down, you know, my, mine are two. I don't react to that because I'm in it for the long haul. Uh, and, you know, because the market had a poor year, I'm, I'm not. Trying to make up for that with further, you know, additional contributions by funds. I, I think we're, we have been. And we're recommending that we treat it the same way, is that we, we don't react to ups and downs in the market. We just take a long-term strategy and stick to that strategy by contributing hundred percent above statutory requirement. You know, using the hundred percent, which is ten percent better than the stated.
All right. All right. Trustee Mesa, do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, sometimes in a down market. It makes sense to put a little bit more in to make up your losses, dollar-cost averaging. So when you're losing money, it's a good idea to put a little more in because you're buying. You're buying at a discount. So. I've said, I've said we're not putting enough in. And when, when, you don't know how long the stretch is going to go on. So. We should be, we should be dollar-cost averaging and I don't think we are.
If I could just add the police pension, like your mortgage is on an amortization schedule. So the purpose of having an annual actuary report is to make sure we meet that target range. And you have to remember that when we're doing a tax levy, we're not a home community, we're limited by dollars. And the more tax you levy you do for the police pension, the less you're going to have in other funds. To subsidize the operations of what you levy for. So the ninety percent is definitely not recommended by me as your finance director. Because that's a problem other communities have had. That was good in the times in two thousand eight when, um, the market was bad. People are not getting revenues and people getting laid off. But today we can't afford to say let's keep it as the, as, um, the village administrator indicated, let's keep it the same. The decision is yours. We can always levy more, um, which means we take out the corporate fund. Um, the police pension, the M C R report is going to a meeting before we go to levy to say this is what our actuary is recommending. And, um, and I'm going to let them know that the staff is going to recommend to the board that we keep the same amount as last year. And the, um, levy will come as is, but I just want to bring up that it is an amortization schedule. Every year is looked at, the market is looked at, the savings, the losses are looked at, and the calculation is made by the experts. To make sure that we meet that target range in the years we have left on this time line. Thank you.
Um, trustee Peterson?
I, I don't have any comments.
Trustee Bluthard?
I have one question and a quick comment, please. In the report, you mentioned that the returns last year were negative six point one. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you mentioned that other departments or other villages that you work with. How did that compare to other agencies that you? Done the same study on?
Yeah, good question. Um, you know, statistically speaking, we don't have all of the facts in front of us, but just anecdotally, I've looked at, you know, several hundred valuations. And I would say in general, for this fiscal year-end period, looking at April thirty fiscal year end. I've generally seen returns from negative five percent to negative eight percent. Um, so that being said, you know, seeing a return at negative six point one, I would say that's pretty much right in line with what, what I would generally expect to see for a fund your size. Uh, during this time period in the market.
Okay. Um, then. Just following up with that, in regards to, I'm all in favor of maintaining the, the, the current status of our payments. Um, and if I understand this properly, based on what you were just referring to, though, is, is. It's better to make that. Recommended contribution and that if by chance we had additional funds, we could always make additional payments later on, correctly. So if tax revenues are up, there would be an influx of additional dollars. We could always at any time make an additional payment into the pension fund to offset. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Berman?
Um, I don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Trustee Domeniac?
I have no question. I'll rely on Zeta and staff expertise in this area.
All right, if, um, no other discussion, I ask for a roll call, please.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Uh thank you for your presentations.
Thank you.
Uh next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement. With Williams Architects for Village Green Resolution Number Twenty-two dash eighty-eights, I entertain a motion and a second. So, motion trustee Pierce?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Out of the discussion, trustee um, Minister Kind, I just wanna briefly tell them um. This is, this is just related to the uh. Cafe or permanent structure at the park, correct?
Yes, and we just got done with the process, selection process of. Williams Architects, they're highly skilled and parks wreck. It was always had intention to use them. You know, for this project, it was time that we started designing this building, getting the documents prepared. We've done some early work on this, we have a pretty good idea of what this building, what size of it, what's included. But now it needs to move to a construction uh package. Uh in pretty short order, so I'm, I'm recommending that we retain Williams to uh design this building. Keep in mind, this fee, their fee includes all construction services through completion of the building. This is not just design. This is, if you start to finish, all of the services that would require until we commission the building and put it in service.
Thank you. Any uh discussion or questions?
Oh, your honor.
All right, uh roll call, please.
Harris?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries um. Do we have anything on the administrative report? No, uh clerk's report?
Well, um at eight AM at the village hall, I'm going in line at eight AM, I'll be placed into the lottery for first placement unveiling. And the last day for petitions will be December nineteenth, um while office will be open until five. Um any questions? Um anyone can reach out to me regarding petitions.
I didn't hear any of that.
We'll repeat that. Yes, trustee Mason.
I'm sorry, trustee Mason. Um the petition filing query for the April fourth, twenty twenty-three consolidated election is going to be December twelfth through the nineteenth. The village hall, anyone in line at eight AM on December twelfth will be placed into a lottery for ballot placement. Um the clerk's office will be open from eight to four, Monday through Friday to accept petitions. With the exception of December nineteenth, we'll be open until five PM to accept petitions um for the April election.
Thank you. Um any trustee reports of those received in writing? Anyone on this side?
No.
Trustee Mason?
None.
All right, Peterson, anyone over, trustee Domeniac?
I just wanted to take a minute and um. Uh thank the efforts of a number of people for making Small Shop Saturday so successful. Um specifically, uh Jim Moran, um and a group of uh business owners in town, including. Um have uh Family Airlines owner Heather Fenzel, uh Ducano Creations owner Debbie Ducano. Uh Inspired Home owner Christine Taliber, Little Bean Coffee Shop and Little Bean Books owner Angela Burns. And the Village Shop oh uh owner Jennifer, and I apologize, I don't remember her last name. But um the idea that uh this group of people came up with under Jim Moran's guidance was, I mean, I don't know if everybody's aware of this. Was, um and thank you for the donation from Fisher Paper Products, was to put together a shopping guide. For Small Shop Saturday that had coupons and I think there were about ten American Express uh gift cards in there. And um these were passed out uh at the parade um by the shop owners and a couple other people. Including a couple of the trustees up here. Um and then um my fellow elf. Mr. Moran and I uh went by on Saturday and passed out more. Um gave some to the different owners, and um these were very well received. Um I thought it was really a terrific way to highlight our businesses. You know, just like everything else, uh when you do it the first time, you gotta have a little bit of a deep breath afterward to, to kinda. Tweak some things that got missed, but um and I think this was a really great idea, and I know that the um. Business owners really appreciated the fact that uh the village made this decision to support them in this way. And from my conversations with the different businesses, um they all. Um said that they had a really good day, so thank you for that. Um the other thing is, I wanted to share with you, and again, um thanks to Jim on this. I was coming back from dropping some things off for uh for Antioch traveling closet, they were talking about. That some commu- St. Charles maybe on the radio, and I thought they're talking about come to St. Charles to shop, and I thought, oh, we should have a commercial like that for. Antioch, and before I could make the turn off of pullback to go on to Orchard, they talked about shop Antioch. And enjoy Antioch, and I heard it again today because I'm addicted to ninety-three point nine, this Chicago music, or the Christie's Music Station, so. Um I think that's, that uh is really helping to get people into town. Um the only other one thing that I wanna say, and it, and I think I have the right to say it, even though we're not debating a motion, is that um. I, I, I can't believe that I had to look at the faces of these people, and that, and that one woman looked like she was gonna cry tonight. Um we signed a diversity and inclusion ordinance and a resolution, and I guess we have to go back and tweak that to say. Who we want to um welcome in our community. That's all I have, your honor.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, so that is it for the uh regular meeting, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Don't move. Uh motion trustee uh Luther and second trustee Pierce, roll call.
Harris?
Hi.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. We'll take a five-minute recess. I call the meeting to order for the uh committee of whole meeting at seven fifty-nine, uh roll call, please.
Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Here, I can barely hear you, Lauren.
Trustee Peterson? Present. See Luther?
Here.
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 Present. Um trustee Mason, attending remotely, uh do I have um? Uh first item is the approval of the November ninth, twenty twenty-two committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion and a second?
Someone?
Motion trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Harris?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac? Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Um first item on the committee, the whole um agenda is regular business discussion regarding the. Twenty twenty-three insurance renewal. Uh we have our insurance broker for Arthur J. Gallagher here and. Representative Ethan Salsiger, I believe, is.
Got it.
Right here in person. All right, I was looking at the screen and there you are.
Yeah, it's uh Adobe. Lauren, do you know what? The presentation that's on.
So this is kind of just a summary of the impact.
Yep.
Great reading.
That, that, the text.
Yeah. Right. Um going on to the next page, this is just kind of a brief overview of what's going on. Uh maybe insurance department, but it's like everything else in our lives, it's affecting, there is affecting uh. Costs, whether it's materials, insurance companies, we have a building, plus one point two, we build right now. Uh cyber liabilities become. Cyber liabilities become a top-tier coverage. What that means is it's a coverage that is harder to obtain, meaning it requires more information. It's a lot more expensive. Um and additionally, you're working against markets that typically look at public entities as. One of the least attractive risks that are out there due to lack of protocols and procedures. Um we continue to see proper killing across country, Hurricane Ian being the latest. That's gonna start to have a heavy effect on reinsurance rates as the year turns. Moving on to the next page, just a brief overview of. The village's exposures. Exposures are what insurance companies look at um as you as a village. Um and enrates you on. There's three main factors, there's other factors as well, but the three driving factors is gonna be TIV, which stands for your total insured value. So all your buildings, autos, et cetera, your payrolls and your auto count. Auto counts are flat, no additions. However, we have seen a big jump in payroll at fifteen percent, and your building values and total insured values are at seven percent. And looking at the village's loss experience, um in years past, we've kind of discussed, there's, the issue has been. The village isn't experiencing a lot of losses, it's just they've had a few severe ones. Just comparing left to right. Shows what you've paid in premium and what you've had in losses.
Sorry, Ethan, I don't even urge you. Um is anybody on the technical team able to zoom in on that screen a little bit unless?
Yeah.
They might, yeah, that's, yeah, much better, thank you.
So.
I know, I think I.
So what that, that chart is showing is that the village is performing at a one hundred five percent loss ratio. Left is what you paid in premium, red is what the insurance company paid on the dollars of losses. Uh and this is since twenty seventeen. So for every dollar that the village pays in work comp insurance, the insurance carrier pays out a dollar and five cents. Um the twenty twenty-two figure uh again is as of November one. And like I said, this is a severity issue, not frequency. If it was a frequency issue, then claims committee. Or safety committee would be working with department, that's, that's not the case. The cases were having one or two big pops, shoulders, knees, whatever, that are requiring surgeries. Uh your loss experience on the other side is not work comp, so your casualty, your property. Um you're operating at a forty percent loss ratio, which is pretty positive, you wanna be under fifty percent. Um you've changed carriers to Liberty Mutual in two thousand nineteen, and we will show our marketing results following this. Again, any of the losses that the village has had too is more a couple pops instead of multiple. Overall cost of cost, um looking at expiring and proposed, which is for two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three. The overall premium is up nineteen percent. Um that figure again is large. However, again, keep in mind, your payrolls are up fifteen, your exposure is up seven. So if you essentially were to go to the market. And have the same information as expiring, your increase will be about eight and a half, nine percent. That other, the additional eleven percent is factoring in your uh additions in TIV and payroll. Additionally, the village is receiving a ten thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollar safety grant from your work comp carrier that is up ten percent from last year. We'll stop right here. Any questions on pricing year-over-year comparison? Hard to read the bottom line, my body focus. Um it looks like last year was four thirty-three and this year is four five oh seven? Correct. And that is not included in cyber insurance. Correct. We have, we needed a couple more pieces of information that we gathered. We should have those final quotes by Friday. However, we did get an offering from Liberty Mutual to talk the cyber end-of-air program, still get a million dollars of coverage. And it's less than what you paid last year. Okay, so we're still looking at about twenty percent. So we're looking at five fifteen. Sure, yeah.
Anything else, Scott? Uh trustee Mason, give insurance guy the questions?
I don't, no, I don't have any questions, no.
All right, all right. Go ahead. Anyone else?
Yeah.
All right, proceed.
Uh moving forward, the next page is just a structured graph, was just a summary of what the village's uh insurance program looks like. Uh again, no changes in limits, deductibles, companies, everything remains the same as last year. Moving on to the next page, I've already covered cyber liability. And the final page is just loss control. We continue to work with Lori and staff, appreciate everyone's work and getting us information and. Uh we're always here to help with trainings and anything insurance related.
I'm sorry, could you share what's on that slide? I, I see colors.
That's loss control, so those are kind of um different programs that we have that. Um our clients have access to, whether it's, you know.
To help control.
Any type of risk management training, sure. So we work with staff to continuously go through and see if there's anything the village is looking for. If they have questions of.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. That's all I have.
All right, any other questions? So any discussion? Let's stop this inflation stuff.
Yeah.
Roll call, please. Or what? Oh, no, roll call, sorry. All right, so this will be on the next uh agenda for approval, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um next item is discussion regarding a text amendment, adding a village code section related to changes in occupancy.
Yes.
Uh Mr. Garrigan, thank you.
Your honor, um staff is bringing before you this evening a concept or potential discussion for what we call change of use permit. Uh one of the challenges we've had over the past several years uh is trying to find a review process. Often, we have new businesses moving to existing buildings um uh. Regrettably, sometimes staff finds out after the fact. As you know, we generally don't have a business license uh requirement. Um so we thought there would be an opportunity uh to uh require. Uh when a new business moves into town, they take a new occupancy or new space. Uh we would require what we call a change of use permit. Uh if somebody moves, moves into a business, changes in use. Um we would require what we call a change of use permit. Many villages do have this requirement. Uh the benefit uh is often relating to life safety, uh if there are may, sometimes uh changes, alterations. Uh in the building, a staff doesn't know about. Sometimes we don't even know what type of business it is, especially in our industrial areas. Uh specifically, they need a business park. Often, we have changes in uses. We don't even know what types of materials are being stored there. So generally, this proposal would address certain um, certain questions that we have as staff. Um from an administrative perspective, and those, you know, specifically, who's the owner of the business? What's the type of business, identification, material changes. Sometimes, believe it or not, people, they don't pull building permits. So we discovered that there are good alterations and changes after the fact. Um generally, if there's materials, what types of materials, uh are there toxic materials? Are there basically flammable materials? What's specifically being stored in that space? Um and parking spaces, sometimes there, there may be parking issues that are not addressed. Um and also uh obviously handicapped um accessibility, so these are some of the uh challenges that we have. Because we don't have a business license requirement um in the village, so we thought this would be a first step. Um again, this will only be specifically required for new businesses, so if you're an existing business, you don't change your uses. We're not, would be no requirements. Again. Um what we're not trying to do is i- i- increase or cause an additional burden on small businesses. We've always tried to be sensitive to the small business community or business community and not create undue bureaucracy, undue regulation. Isn't, is that, that is not our goal here. Our goal is simply to try to attract new businesses. Uh which affords us the ability to not only have um a re- record owner of that new business, an emergency contact, which is important. But to be able to make sure that uh no toxic materials or anything dangerous is being stored in that facility. We're proposing a very modest fee of twenty-five dollars um per application, per permit. Also give us an opportunity to have a brief uh inspection of property, make sure there's no major life safety issues. Or that no dangerous materials are being stored. So I wanted just to bring this up for discussion. I see there will be generally, general support for this uh change of use application process. With that. Uh my staff report, be more than happy to answer any questions. I did prepare a preliminary, preliminary application. Uh which was a summary of some other communities that they have adopted this type of permit process. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have.
All right, thank you. And. It's about, it's about time. Um. See, Pierce, yep.
How well does this work in other communities?
Uh what, as, as you know, uh many communities have incorporated this type of process into business license. Um which is generally required, which may be a little over comprehensive. I think it works quite well. Um and obviously, there is, you know, some volitional requirements. A business has to basically file this. On a volitional voluntary basis. Um so we, that we count on a good faith ability of businesses. Um once we get the word out, we, our responsibility is to get the word out. Make sure businesses, new businesses understand that they are required to get this permit. What I'm surprised by is the number of businesses that contact me, and they ask me specifically. What I'm surprised by is number of businesses that contact me and they ask me specifically, okay, so what do I need to file? Do I need to file business license? And often they even question, they just can't believe that we don't require a business license for a change of use application. Because frankly, most communities require that, you know. Most communities are in the Chicago suburban areas do require some type of either business license or occupancy permit or change of use application. I mean, we've always been kind of lazy, fair hands off. But again, we get questions, why don't we track these businesses? I have had, I've had people, trustees simply say, what business moved into that space? And why don't you know what business and what do they do? We often don't know actually what that business is. So this is a way to try and address that challenge we have because we don't track these businesses. We don't know what type of business operations there are. We, we found sometimes toxic chemical materials, we didn't have, had no idea were being stored in these businesses. So again, for life safety purposes, this gives us, this is for this ability to try to address that while also being sensitive, trying to minimize the amount of regulation for these businesses. So it's a balancing act. Obviously, you'll be sensitive to business demands, but I think you could go too far in having the hands-off or lazy affair approach because again, when something goes wrong, you know, with that business, and people ask, well, why do you, why did you not know what type of business was operating in that premises? Or we have no process to find out.
Okay.
This also prevents the issue, sometimes unfortunately, businesses move in, they don't have the proper zoning. So that causes a whole other set of challenges that we have, you know, we, we had to go through the process. We've had the example of that this year where the, the African had a company for the plan commission village board get various because they, in good faith, they just simply did not know that they were not a permitted use in that, in those premises. So that was kind of a waste of time for everybody. One, one discussion or this process would have avoided that. Instead, would have been required to get a change of use, we'll check the zoning, we would explain to them that it's not, it's not a permitted use. And at that point, you know, the confusion would have been mitigated.
How do we enforce this? You said it was voluntary and, and don't get me wrong, I think this is a good idea and we need to find a way to make it work. But you already admitted that some of the people just do their building changes without even pulling permits and stuff.
We do.
And then we don't know that, something that was in there for some specific reasons is, oh my God, what do you do?
So, I mean, I, I don't think this would address a hundred percent, but it would be, it would be an approach. It would probably be a much more effective approach than what we have right now. And for those businesses that don't have change of occupancy permit, then that would afford us the ability to basically work with them, whether it's a small fine, administrative fine, we would put the burden on the businesses. So they would have the obligation to do some due diligence to make sure there's no permit process. Now, the burden on us is having a good website, getting the word out, either putting our Facebook, having all the information on our, on our website, making a business, business friendly and getting the word out that if you're a new business, you are required to get this simple twenty-five dollar change of use permit. So we would have a burden to try to get the word out to all new businesses that this is something that would be an obligation. Again, most sophisticated businesses know, they generally do check with the village hall and specifically talk to me or somebody in the village hall and ask, what do I need? What do I need to register my business? Do I need license my business? Do I need a change of use? What do I specifically need? So the vast majority of businesses already do that. Again, believe it or not, they're often surprised that we don't have a business license requirement or a change of use permit, so.
Would there be a reason to, to, for a certain time period waive the the twenty-five dollar fee so that, I mean, really twenty-five dollars is kind of piddly.
It's nominal.
It's nominal. Use a better word than piddly, I guess. To, to, to encourage people to follow this, as, as we educate our businesses and get them.
I mean, that's, that's a good suggestion, that's a prerogative of the board, you know, that's, I mean, as you know, we've never been obsessed about fees. The way we, I just suggested that it covers some of the minimum administrative costs, there'll be some additional administration, some paper processing, but it, it won't be unduly burdensome for staff. So we're, we're, I think we're proposing a modest program. We don't have a huge amount of new businesses, hopefully we will in the future, but we have a reasonable number of new businesses that we can track. And so if you wanted to waive the fee first year or permanently waive the fee, obviously that's a reasonable proposal and it's prerogative of the village board. Thank you, Mr. Gergen. Trustee Mason.
So, so this is going to be an ongoing tax? Every year tax, Michael?
No, just that, no, yeah, just that the change of, this is just the change of use. This is just a change of use.
So this would be one time, this would just be a one-time, one-time.
That business, right. So let's say we had a business that, I'll just pick an address, let's say nine twenty Main Street. If that business was there for ten years, they would never have to worry about getting this permit again. Now, if a new business comes to that property, then they would have the obligation to get a new permit. So once you have this change of use permit application, that's good as long as that same business is in that same premises. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because there was a mayor that tried, we'll just call her Marilyn Shine Food. She tried to put it on everybody and, and there's people that pay large amount of license fees to, to the state, to the feds, to everybody. And, you know, licenser tract and everything else, and it's just another, another taxation on a license. You, you got multiple tiers of licenses when you, so that's the only concern I would have, that it, then it becomes an annual. If it's one time, it's fine for, I, I, I understand what you're doing.
It's one time, one time.
I understand what you're doing, that, that for life safety, that makes sense.
Mayor. I think it's a great idea and it's, it's going to protect everything. We won't have a building falling out because we didn't know there were toxins, explosive toxins in there. So I, I like it.
Sure, and I just want to raise one thing because I understand trustee Mason's concern about, you know, people who already like lawyers who pay annual fees for licenses and accountants and other people that do that. But I know that predating anybody in this room, there's a portion in our code that already talks a little bit about business licenses. It has kind of been just nineteen seventy-six, that there's licenses, there's a fifteen dollar annual fee, twenty-five dollars if you have more than five employees. So I'm of the, of the opinion that it's something that we either look at and enforce or look at and remove from our code if it's there, you know, not, again, this is something that just kind of fell off the wayside. And I also am very conscious of having to charge businesses every year an additional fee or do additional paperwork for licenses. But I would say that it would have a, a purpose as we do have more businesses in town to be able to track those and ensure, other than goodwill of a business owner to come in and say, hey, I sold my business to so-and-so. Then we actually look at that ordinance again in addition to this and see if it's something that we, you know, put into place. And even if it's a one-time thing or every couple of years, they have to get a new license, it's a two- or five-year license, just something to track those businesses would be something for us to look at. Trustee Luther.
Michael, how many would you estimate in a year would we have applicants for this? If everyone complied?
We're going, I'd say nowhere in twenty-five.
And it's just back, that's just back of the humble estimate, but you know. Could be more, could be less.
Could be more.
You're talking minimal dollars for the twenty-five.
Right, so now it's really should be nominal, this is, we're not trying to generate revenue here.
And now would that cover companies that same owners, same everything, would they just change their business name? Would they have to comply with this? Be just.
No, I think.
This is an actual.
This is a new, actually new business, it just have a good marketing change name. I don't think we're going to go, make a go through the process.
Let's skip this one to the end of it. In regards to enforcement or penalties or fines, if they don't comply with this, because doing this and then not having anything on the backend would be a waste of our time and energy. So, because if they cannot, if they don't do anything and there's no penalty to not doing it, then why do it at all? My question would be, what are neighboring communities do in regards to if a business doesn't comply? And what that fee structure or buying structure is? I'd rather put it with minimal or zero fees to apply or to submit the application, but then have, if they don't have significant penalties that are enforceable. Because if there's nothing there to enforce it, we shouldn't even bother.
I agree, I agree, and that makes complete sense. So I think a good reference would typically go just with double, whatever the administration cost is, you know, so whatever you, you're punished, not punished, but there's a slight sanction that if you don't proceed with an required permit, then they may double it or you can triple it. So there's usually noticed that, so.
Do you have any of those numbers from neighboring communities?
I can get those numbers.
I would, I would be interested to see that because I'd rather see, I want to make sure we have some type of enforcement mechanism. That's just not, here's a ticket.
I can bring back some of the numbers from other surrounding communities. So typically what would happen if somebody moved in and didn't get this permit, we, we'd have a reason to knock on the door. Hi, we're the village, you know, and we would say, are you aware that an occupancy permit required? And notify him and then give him a time break, you know, please go ahead and give your occupancy permit, which gets us in to start this process. And if they, if they don't do it, well, that's when the red tag will come out, say you're in violation of this and then you get the double, you know, you get the double the permit fee. So we, and that's typical for most any violation, find, hey, are you aware there's violation? Please correct it. If they don't correct it, well, then we take the next step and write that red tag. And if they don't satisfy it after that, then it goes to the legal counsel for prosecution. So there's.
And then five years later we find out.
Sometimes. Sometimes, but this will be, really the purpose of this is so we can have a reason to knock on the door and reason to get in the building just to see what's going on for all myriad of reasons that we want to see what's happening.
And, and then just following up on what the mayor commented on is if we have something on the books already during the business license and it's in there, we either can clean that up, update it or remove it. I agree because that can be confusing as a lot for a business owner. But I'm all in favor of this. I think we need to, to work on the, the fee structure. Twenty-five bucks isn't going to hurt anybody, but at the same time, there's really no need for twenty or thirty of these. It's not going to break any act if we don't charge them for it, but I want to see some heavy enforcement side to it.
That's fine.
Trustee Berman.
I agree with trustee Luther. I, I think it's, like you said, pointless if we don't have anything to force with. But I do, like you had stated, to make sure that there's a, you know, there's a balance there. So it's a good thing.
Trustee Domenia.
I think many of my questions about this have been raised. I mean, we don't have a good history on code enforcement, so I think that we need to put some teeth in this and actually enforce our code. I'm thinking that, I, I think this is a great idea, but I don't think we should do this and not do the business license. To me, this should be part of the business license. And yes, as it, as a business changes, then they, that business should apply for a new license. Some part of that license would be this, so I would not be in favor of passing this without doing the business license. I mean, it doesn't seem to be urgency on this, so perhaps that's the next step. That's what I would support, but that's just my opinion. Oh, and my other question is, where's the building owner in all this? Because this is about the business. If we're, if they're doing modifications in a building that they don't own, we're, we need to somehow dial in the building owner and what their remedy is.
Right. Right, so within the application, there is a requirement to identify the building owner, but it's different than the business owner. So that information will have to be basically provided.
So fee structures around, or
Penalties.
Penalties, thank you, for code violations or making modifications without building permits, I think need to be pretty hefty. Need to send a message to these people, we have buildings that need a lot of work. Oh, I have.
Trustee Pierce, thank you, trustee Pierce.
I just wanted to reaffirm what trustee Luther said. I'd rather see on the tail end to say you didn't follow our rules than charge in front of you. And I, I would like to see in regards to what trustee Domenia said, alternate plans of, of just this or is combined with business or a separate separation could probably be.
Right, we can have more comprehensive discussion, we can provide you what the code we have as a license specific for business licenses to consider refreshing memories from the nineteen seventies. And maybe we can have a whole, what a holistic discussion about business licenses and changes in uses and occupancy permits.
So maybe suggest, but I'll come up, that next time, depending on what the agenda looks like for December, January, come back with our business, our code requirement for business licenses. And maybe if we can gather, you know, two or three surrounding communities and see if there's similar, you know, similar requirements and kind of compare those.
I mean, I'd be interested if someone still relatively on the board, but to know what is required for, like, so if I'm looking to open a business in town, what is, what do we currently require? What do we actually do versus what we should be doing? So I mean, I mean, I know there's probably stuff on the books that we don't do, there's probably stuff we do and then we need to clean that all up, make it a smooth transition to, to where we're including this, but making sure everything's up to date. I think that's the way to go.
Trustee Domenia.
I don't know. Trustee Berman? No, no. When we first moved up here, before we had someone who's got the skillset Michael has to know how to do economic development, it was like a business would open up and then six months later it closed because you had all these people that thought, oh, I want to open a business and they couldn't do it because they didn't know what they were doing and they didn't have the capital to do it. If somebody doesn't have twenty-five dollars, open up a business in this town, then I'm thinking they're probably not going to be strong for this situation. So I would think that we need to be covering our costs and twenty-five dollars.
There you go, I like the discussion direction this joins. Thank you, Mr. Gergen. Any other business that anyone wants to raise? Otherwise, I would request executive session for property acquisition, no further business to occur after executive session. And I'm going to take a motion as second. Motion trustee Blue Card. Seventeen trustee Peterson. All right, roll call please.
May I say? Can I say?
Yes, sorry.
Peterson? Yes.
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Domenia?
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, going into executive session with no further business afterwards.